Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Cablecast Public Hearing for Tuesday, July 8th, 2025, relative to Bills 2023-1723 and 2023-1698. Will the clerk please read the title of the bill?
Bill 2023-1698, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning, Article 4, Chapter 909.01P, SP-9 Bakery Square, amending the certain provisions of Chapter 909.01P, and by the addition of a new sections 909.01P.1C through G. In Bill 2023-1723, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning, Article 1, Section 902.03 Zoning Map, by changing from Highway Commercial District to Bakery Square District, certain property roughly bounded by Penn Avenue, East Liberty Boulevard, and the Pittsburgh Regional Transit East Busway, all in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System 11th Ward, and by changing from Urban Industrial District to Bakery Square District, that certain property roughly bounded by Penn Avenue and the existing easternmost boundary of the Bakery Square District in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System 12th Ward, and by changing from Highway Commercial District to Urban Industrial District, that certain property roughly bounded by the northwestern boundary of the Bakery Square District and Norfolk Southern Rail Line in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System 11th Ward.
And for the record, we are joined today by my distinguished colleague from District 8, Erica Strasburger, and our first order of business will be an introduction by the Department of City Planning, and I believe we also will have a presentation by the applicants as well.
Good afternoon, my name is Kate Riggins. I am a Senior Planning Manager in Zoning and Development Review with City Planning.
Hi, and I'm Corey Lehman, Zoning Administrator with City Planning.
So I just wanted to make a brief statement about process for these bills. So on September 3rd of 2024, Planning Commission made a positive recommendation with conditions on both Council Bill 2023-1723 and 2023-1798, both with conditions. But the legislation that's before the public hearing today has had those changes integrated by substitution. So the current version includes everything that Planning Commission recommended. And as required by the zoning code, we mailed and posted notice 21 days in advance of this hearing today. That is all.
Okay. Mr. Lehman, are you pulling something up?
Oh, no, sir.
Okay.
No, sir, thank you.
Awesome. So I think we're ready for the presentation from the applicants. Thank you. If you could just introduce yourself, sir.
Sure, good afternoon, my name is Jonathan, last name is Kamyn, K-A-M-I-N, and I'm attorney for Walnut Capital, who is the proposed applicant, and in particular for the Bakery Square entities that are the applicant for the expansion of this SP district. We're having a slight technical issue in that I'm waiting on an email with the presentation, but let me just walk it through. I brought a flash drive, but I think they've said it would be easier for me to do it via Zoom. So let me just give a little bit of background while we're waiting on that. This process started over two years ago with a community-driven process where we had spent a tremendous amount of time with our community partners being ELDI, the Laramore Consensus Group, and Village Collaborative to think about what really could happen with the expansion of the SP district and the growth that would be associated with that, and working through a process to manage that in a thoughtful and equitable way. After about a year of meetings, we arrived at a Community Benefits Agreement, which we're very proud of, which has a number of factors and aspects to it which we think are incredibly significant, including the first, what I would call, development of the Build 100 program, which is off-site, for-sale, affordable housing. And we've talked about setting up a fund that's very significant to go ahead and to fund that through each phase of the development. In addition to that, the Community Benefits Agreement calls for a portion of the TRID dollars to be shared with the various community organizations for various projects that they find to be important to their respective neighborhoods and important to the overall development of the whole Laramore, East Liberty, Shady Side corridor. With respect to the nuts and bolts of the actual process itself, and I should say, we're very pleased to have Deanna. And as I was introducing Deanna before, there's some people in the world who are only known as Cher or Madonna, with one name only. And Deanna is one of those people. We're pleased to have Deanna with us from Laramore Consensus Group, and also Donna Jackson, who is our rock, and also from Laramore Consensus Group here today to support us, as well as Maylene Myers, all of whom have been integral in this process and excellent community partners. I can run through, I did receive the deck now, I can run through it if you want. If you wouldn't like me to just go quickly with it, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes. They say teamwork makes the dream work, and I just witnessed it. Thanks to the collaboration with the help from City Planning, I didn't know that you moonlight as IMP expert.
We're just helpers, that's what we're here for.
Thank you, everybody, for your patience. And I'll walk through this deck quickly. This is a shot of just sort of the existing conditions, and I think it's always important as we start through this process to remember what was there before, prior to the SP district, and this was the old Nabisco Building. And this became, obviously, Bakery Square in the mixed-use development. In 2013, as a milestone, Walnut purchased the Reisenstein property from Pittsburgh Public Schools, created the SP 9 district. And it's important to note, when the old Nabisco factory was there, it was $84,000 in annual tax revenue, about 400 employees. Today, we're over $4 million in annual tax revenue, and 4,000 people work at Bakery Square. And in our milestones, as Kate mentioned during her presentation, this was unanimously recommended by the Planning Commission on September 2nd, 2024. This is an overview of the existing district, which is shown in orange, where we're looking to expand. The SP District 2 is shown on the left, which is the shopping center. That's the existing HC district. And then what we refer to is the Old Matthews Building, which is an existing UI district. This is again just another shot of that showing some of the different buildings that are there and what we're looking to do. This is a shot today of sort of what the existing HC district looks like. As you can see, sort of a suburban parking center, or suburban shopping center with a lot of front yard parking. This is just a showing of what the existing SP district has allowed to happen. I know you are all familiar with Bakery Square, and this is the type of flexibility in zoning that we're looking to create to unleash the growth and development on the new site. These are just some shots of some things that are happening at Bakery Square. We're very proud of what we've created in terms of a gathering place for all the communities, and it is definitely the most diverse and inclusive place in, we believe, all Pittsburgh, with who patronizes it and the activities and programming we have there. Just some more shots of this. And then this really gets translated into our vision for the SP district. And I do want to thank Councilman Mosley, Councilwoman Strasburger, for all their help in sort of shepherding us through this process and working with the community groups to help deliver on the shared vision. Again, as we talked about, what's really unique about this location is it is at the fulcrum of multiple different communities. You have East Liberty, you have Laramore, you have Homewood, you have Point Breeze, you have Shady Side, all that sort of connect at this spot. One of the things that we're excited about with the SP amendment is that it will unlock the highest potential for development of this, and that doesn't just mean development, that means being able to provide TRID dollars and economic incentives and generation to the remaining and surrounding communities. This is a little bit of what I discussed before about the community and public process. In 2021, this started with a discussion about creating the SP district, and we spent nearly two years, as I said, with our partners, Laramore Consensus Group, Village Collaborative, ELDI, and Kingsley, working towards developing what we think this wants to be when it grows up in the CBA. We had a number of meetings throughout the process, including several public meetings and workshops at Kingsley. We also had meetings at Robin Baptist Church, where there were numerous discussions as to taking public input on this. And what came out of the CBA was really a focus on various aspects. One was affordable, off-site, for-sale housing. And I should note that the affordable, off-site, for-sale housing that we're talking about is in line with what is Laramore's community plan in terms of levels of affordability and what they're looking to do. We also do have an affordable onsite component that came out of this process. We have what we call the People and Places projects, which are the projects that I discussed earlier, that are projects that are neighborhood-specific, that the community is looking to have jump-started. We have workforce development, and of course, this culminated in great community organization support. Just a little more detail on the various aspects. On the off-site, we talked about the Build 100, which is setting aside money to go ahead and build off-site, for-sale, affordable homes. What we've talked about on terms of onsite is 5% will be set for AMIs between 80 and 120%, and an additional 10% is available, if that gap can be funded, to bring the total onsite up to 15%. Again, we talked about the People and Places projects, and also on the workforce development piece, we are partnering with Partners for Work, which I know many of you are familiar with, but is really a premier organization in Pittsburgh and this region in terms of being able to harness and yield great results for workforce development. When we say the vision is already working, it has been recognized by not just us, but by various governmental partners that what we're talking about is something that matters and the synergies are important. We did receive a reconnecting communities planning grant for $2 million from the Department of Transportation. That is focused on being able to do the work and building the cap and planning to connect these communities together on a pedestrian and, you know, real basis, you know, spanning the busway and thinking about things we can do for that. We have a Public Works Grant that we've gotten, and an Energy Futures Grant that we've gotten, all of which is directly related to the investment that we're making and the investment that we think the neighborhood will reap the benefits of. So here are some nuts and bolts on the district expansion. Again, we're talking about expanding the existing SP 9 into the Shopping Center District, as you saw before, and onto the Matthews property. And we've talked a little bit about some of the benefits associated with this. We have, as part of the planning process, come up with some sub-districts for this. So there'll be more density in the Subdistrict D. Subdistrict C is really focusing on that relationship with Penn Avenue, and it has sort of different facade and street wall-type standards that will allow for sort of a seamless and what we call, you know, viable street wall along Penn Avenue with the new facade and elemental designs that are allowed in Subdistrict C. Here's a little bit more detail on Subdistrict C in terms of the bulk regulations, heights, frontages. And we think that, again, this will match very nicely with what's already there. We have provided for larger sidewalks, larger public realm, larger street trees, to be able to really focus on the pedestrian experience along this corridor as well. This is just a shot of Subdistrict C. Subdistrict D is really the back part of the site off of Penn Avenue. This does allow for some greater density, and this does allow for a little bit more flexibility in design in terms of primary frontages and secondary frontages. And some shots of D. Subdistrict E is just the Matthews Building, as we call it, Bakery Square 4. And we're not really planning anything right now for this district, but it did seem to make sense as we're moving forward on sort of this large rezoning to go ahead and have everything be consistent and congruent throughout. One of the things that we're very excited about, the opportunity, is to reconnect the communities with a street grid. And what we have, we've already received a grant to be able to start some of this process, but our vision is to be able to connect the intersection of Penn and Shady all the way through our property and through the existing Bakery Square to get to McPherson, to get to, all the way over to Fifth Avenue and McPherson. We think it's the way that the community wants it to be. We're going to look to reduce these superblocks and allow for passages in and out and have more of a rhythm. And I'm pleased to report that the first part of a grant that we've received allows for that first part of road to be constructed. And we're working through that now with DOMI to allow for that first leg from really Shady Avenue halfway through the site to happen. And Walnut is contributing property to this effort to make it to happen because we believe as part of, you know, what we've learned and what we've worked through, this connection and reconnecting the communities is critical. There are planned public infrastructure improvements and private infrastructure improvements. Some of those things that we're working on is increasing the access to public transit with new bus stations and new areas. I know that both of the council people in the room are familiar with what we've done with the bus stop there in trying to turn those into smart bus stops so that people can see what's happening and make their commutes better. We're improving the pedestrian priority zones, improving pedestrian connections, very focused on ADA accessibility, and again, this connection that we had talked about. This is an overall view, I talked a little bit about it, of the overall connections that we see. The orange highlights the busway. And as you can see, we see these sort of various corridors of connections happening through the site, and it's critically important to be able to bring all of these communities that we have together. This is just a side show, you know, the existing street activation is de minimis. It's really, you know, a little bit of activation in front of the Trader Joe's and a little bit of activation in front of the shopping center. And what we're talking about is creating these corridors where there's significantly enhanced activation. And again, we think that's a more thoughtful and a much more beneficial environment for everybody. As you know, this is just a process where we've gotten the PLDP approved, we're now coming through for the zoning. And each of these projects, as they come forward over time, will have their own FLDP in public process as we move forward through the Planning Commission. This is just a conceptual shot. Right now, we're thinking Phase 1 is the old Club 1 site, the intersection of Penn and Shady. Part of the reason why that is Phase 1 is because we've received that grant, and we have to get this road in place by 2027 to be able to utilize those federal dollars for this. So we're working very hard on getting that moving right now. And then the existing phases will come in as we sort of move through the process. One of the questions that we were often asked is, what is going to happen to Trader Joe's? We don't have any plans to move Trader Joe's, just to answer that question there. We think in that building for the foreseeable future. And that's what we had. I know I went through it relatively quickly, but I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody may have or to go into a little more detail if you think that would be helpful.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Kamyn. There may be some questions after a public comment, but right now, our next order of business will be testimony from registered speakers. Please give your name and address for the public record. And each speaker will have three minutes to address counsel. Our first registered speaker is Chris Beam. I don't know if they're online. Good afternoon, Chris.
Hello, thank you. My name is Chris Beam, and I live in Bloomfield on Morgan Street. But I'll be testifying on behalf of ProHousing Pittsburgh. We are in support of the expansion of Bakery Square to encompass a current Village of Eastside. The current conditions on the site are a dangerous liability to the city, to East Liberty, to Laramore, and to all those who live, work, shop in the area. The Highway Commercial Zone has no place being located right next to one of the nicest transit stations in western Pennsylvania. And the proposed expansion of Bakery Square is a much-needed proposal that we urge you to support. There are three main points that we're particularly supportive of: prioritization of people and pedestrian accessibility over cars, with the pedestrian connectors to Laramore, both near Target but also Putman Street, near Hamilton Avenue; the taller, denser, transit-oriented development. East Liberty used to be one of the largest job centers in Pennsylvania, and this project will help restore East Liberty as a housing and jobs hub; and third, investment in Laramore and East Liberty housing through the proposed Build 100 Fund to invest in 100 market-rate and affordable homes in historically neglected neighborhoods. Just to restate the case, we are in support of this proposal and are disappointed that such a significant investment in our city was postponed for nearly a year for no good reason. We urge you to support this rezon and pass the ordinance immediately. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris. Our next registered speaker is, I didn't know, you know, you were up there with Madonna and Sting, but Deanna, but I'll give your full government, Deanna Davis, our next registered speaker.
Good afternoon, my name is Deanna Davis, and I live in the east end of Pittsburgh. Excuse me, I have a little speech here. Good afternoon, Councilman, President, and Member of Council. My name is Deanna Davis, and I serve as the Vice Chair of the Laramore Consensus Group. I'm speaking on behalf of our Board of Directors, and the absolute for Chair, Mr. K. Chase Patterson, who wishes that he could be here. Laramore has carried the weight of blight for decades. We watched our streets empty of opportunities, our homes demolished without replacement, and our families displaced by neglect and broken promises. Our community bears scars of redlining, urban renewal, sympathetic disinvestment, but still, we remain rooted. Still, we believe in the promise of our neighborhood. That is why we are here today to affirm our support to the expansion of the Special Project District, connecting Walnut Capital Bakery Square Initiative. This proposal is not perfect, but it is real. It is grounded in an executed community benefit agreement, one that was born of deep negotiation, mutual respect, and a commitment to share future. We understand the skepticism, I'm sorry, that can surround large-scale development, especially in the historical overlooked neighborhoods like ours. But this time, we did not just show up to listen, we showed up to shape. And Walnut Capital has met us in that work. We are prepared to hold every partner accountable, not just Walnut Capital, but ourselves included. Because this is bigger than any single project, it's about setting a new precedent for what community development can look like in Pittsburgh. We have an opportunity to make history today, and we are asking you to join us in building that history with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. I know we have some other distinguished guests in the gallery. Is anyone who hasn't registered would like to make public comment?
Good afternoon, my name is Donna Jackson. I serve as the Executive Director of the Laramore Consensus Group. I've been one of the founding members of the organization. I speak to you today on behalf of a neighborhood that knows what it means to be overlooked and what it takes to survive. Laramore has weathered decades of blight, promise made to our communities has to be often gone unsealed, and trust has been earned slowly, if at all. That's why our approach, this project, has been deliberate, transparent, and community-centered. Over the past three years, we've engaged in meaningful conversations with Walnut Capital. We didn't rubber stamp a plan. We negotiated a Community Benefits Agreement that outlines current commitments and priorities that reflect the voices and values of our residents. Yes, we know doubt exists, and that fair history has given our communities every reason to be cautious. But we also know that progress requires risk and responsibilities. We are prepared to do our part to ensure that what's been promised is delivered. We believe Walnut Capital is ready to do theirs. This is not just about bricks and mortars. This is about creating jobs, improving public spaces, reconnecting our communities to opportunities. Our proud of working relationships with development with Walnut Capital. We need this proposal approved. And we are not here to plead, we are here to partner. Laramore is ready to move forward, and we ask you to stand with us, making this possible. Lormer is ready to move forward and we ask you to stand with us making this possible. And I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Is there anyone else in the, in the gallery that would like to make public comment?
Everyone, I'm Maylene Myers, East City Development Corporation, and I'm here to stand with my partners, Walnut Capital, because they've done an amazing job over the years I've been here. Yesterday was my 29th year ELDI, and you can see the progress we've made because we believe in collaboration. We've always believed in that. And I think it's very important that we understand that we cannot do it alone. We must do it together. I think Walnut brings credibility. They've been amazing, as you can see, the Bakery Square has been phenomenal. It certainly has increased the, our population. It's a destination to come to. It certainly is in addition to the third downtown East Liberty. And I stand here to look forward to see the third part, which is that part of town, to be developed. So I stand here in support of you, work as a tool to help with Walnut Capital and other organizations in the East End to ensure this project goes forward. Thank you for your time and it's so good to see all of you. I stand by to any questions, but I stand with Walnut Capital. They are amazing partner and thank you for what you've done for the East End, bringing back life and vitality to our youngster because they have a place to come out and hang out, so do I. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maylene. Is, are there any other speakers? If, if not, I would like to open up if the councilwoman has any questions.
If it's, if it's proper protocol, I just had one question to ask whoever can answer. Actually, it's a, it's a two-part question. So one part of it is if someone can recall the existing TRID over, or maybe the original TRID, some examples of where the, the money leverage from that TRID went, if anyone can recall. I don't mean to put anyone on the spot, but you know, it doesn't need to be an exhaustive list, but some of the examples.
Sure.
Oh, we also have others from, from the, from the audience who can answer that question.
Come to the table.
Yeah, you're welcome to come to the table, but if someone else...
I can, I can start the answer if you want. And then, I don't know, Donna, you want to start?
Well, I can start. Well, actually, I should say, Deanna should start this conversation because she came to me to tell me that she made partners with somebody. I'm like, okay, here goes another partner. And she introduced me to Greg. We sat and had a conversation and basically that's how it got started, what a first TRID. We made a negotiation to where they gave us a grant for a million and another one to work with workforce development and several other things we were doing.
Also with infrastructure. So with the grant...
You may, you have to get a little closer.
With the grant, when we talk about affordable housing, it was, it enabled us to build two affordable houses within our community. And with infrastructure, it was able to help us with, there's a church across from our office called New Jerusalem, so we were able to assist them in getting the sidewalk.
Yes, repair the sidewalk. They had repaired one part of the sidewalk, but they needed to repair the other one because it was breaking up. So we finished that project for them.
And, and the way the, the TRID works is that the whole project is within a TRID district, but then as each individual property or development comes forward, we bring that forward as a separate TRID. And then we work with the URA and our community partners to identify infrastructure projects that are allowable uses under the TRID statute and to do that. So there've been improvements to infrastructure, improvements to Penn Avenue, improvements to, you know, various water sewer utilities all along there, not to mention the bike way and some of those other items are TRID improvements. What the, this CBA anticipates is essentially a two-part process. As the development comes forward, there'll be, again, TRID dollars that are created, but then there's a prioritization of projects within the neighborhoods for the places projects, and then there's also the people projects. And without knowing exactly what the timeline is on each of those projects come forward, we'll sit together as a group, prioritize what is of the, the greatest need and work on that. We know that there's been discussion about public infrastructure that's necessary in some of the communities to unlock the development that hasn't happened for affordable housing and number, you know, the, the stuff like water sewer, those types of things. And we'll just prioritize it as it comes forward.
So could I add something? We're talking about we all met over two years. It's been longer than two years, right? It's actually been maybe close to five to six years that we've been working on this partnership because, yes, it's been about five, six years. I mean, we worked through COVID, through Zoom. Yeah, it's been a long battle, but a long good partnership.
So, and just because the nuts and bolts sometimes leave my brain, the TRID, the original TRID that I remember, you know, from, I don't know, more than 10 years ago, still remains, correct? It has not expired, there's not a new TRID, this is the same TRID, it's just there's new development coming online that can spur additional development, infrastructure dollars.
Right. So the original TRID, I believe the statute has a 40-year horizon, but from the creation of the district till its sunset. What will happen is each project comes forward and that has a borrowing period, usually 20 years, associated with the project. So, you know, Bakery 3 had its own TRID that we did and, and those were some of the dollars that Deanna and Donna were talking about that were utilized. And we did because they had identified a, a need for some workforce development. We did go ahead and, and take some of those dollars that we otherwise would have spent on infrastructure and put those dollars towards the grant to help them for workforce because that's something that they identified that they needed. So all the TRID dollars were invested in allowable uses, but that allowed us to go ahead and to help them on the workforce side. So we don't need to expand the TRID. We will need to add these properties as what they call contributing properties to that. And that process will, will happen with the URA when we have a development piece ready to go.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I don't have any questions. You know, we have monthly phone calls, you know, about this project and specific elements of the project, particularly the Build 100. You know, I just want to thank everyone who's been involved with this project that I inherited since coming into office and I've always been adamant about, I want to honor the work that, that came before me in this process. You know, I've had many conversations about this and, and have gotten, you know, a great history lesson of all the meetings and everything that, that has led to this day. And, you know, and, and going back to almost, you know, two years ago was the first time I really got, you know, introduced to this project and it was well on its way. You know, at, at, at that point, I think the first lesson I got on this was from Malik Bankston, actually, in a, in a four-hour meeting at Margot. If anybody's ever been in a meeting with Malik Bankston, you know, like if you're not paying attention to your watch, you look up and three hours later, you're still talking. But it was really, really, you know, a great primer, you know, for this and, you know, all the amazing work that Maylene does with ELDI and, you know, me and Ms. Jackson talk probably on a weekly basis, you know, she's always ringing my phone, she's always, she's one of the people that has my personal cell phone. She doesn't call the city cell, she calls a personal cell phone. And, you know, I just think that this is, you know, a, a project that, that is, you know, truly transformational through the community benefits agreement and the work that is done. I also, you know, want to thank, you know, the leadership of Walnut Capital, I see Todd here for being willing to sit down, you know, have some, you know, really difficult conversations with myself and Mayor Gani around onsite affordability and really taking, you know, a real attempt and having real consideration and, and having a real commitment to, to finding a way in a really tough construction environment. You know, we talk about labor costs and we talk about interest rates, to really be willing to sit down and, you know, and we're going to continue to work together, you know, to, to find a way, you know, to thread that needle. But I really truly appreciate being a part of those discussions and, and I guess that was late 2023 and early 2024, you know, over at the Kingsley, trying to figure out a way to make that work as long as, as well as, you know, honor the commitment to the Build 100 project, which was a really difficult moment that we had, you know, in this process. But I truly appreciate the willingness to come to the table and try to figure out a way to do off-site affordability and onsite affordability. So we'll continue, you know, on that difficult journey, understanding the environment that we're operating in, you know. So I don't know if the councilwoman has, has any, anything else to say, but, you know, I look forward, you know, to, to the future of this project. I definitely, much like the earlier speaker, you know, would like to see a much better use of this parcel from an urban design, design standpoint. I was a political science major, but I took a couple urban design classes at IUP. I don't know how many they have, but I think I may have taken all of them and, you know, learned about smart growth and, 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 and a proper kind of pedestrian scale and the type of things that you're talking about as well as the sustainability commitment that, that you have as well. I think that's an important thing that we didn't really talk about today is, is, is the commitment to sustainability, stormwater management, clean energy. So I think for all those reasons, you know, I think, you know, this is, you know, a great example of how, you know, folks that don't always agree on everything can come together, you know, and create a, a model project that addresses so many different things that we're concerned around, about affordability, about green space, about clean energy, about environmentalism, but then most importantly about, you know, bringing together various stakeholders that have various interests and finding where we all sync, where we're all in sync and we all can kind of come together and, you know, find that common thing to rally around. So I, I, I look forward, you know, to, to, to the future and, and definitely not a highway commercial suburban mall in the middle of the most dense part of Western Pennsylvania. So with, with no further comment, with no further questions, having exhausted our list of registered speakers and we took comments from the audience, the business of this public hearing is now adjourned.